Right here at six thirty. Press five.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, June twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four. We call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council had two additions for you to consider. One would be, you can add the item thirteen point five. It's a gambling premise permit request. And then the second item would be item number seventeen. I'd ask the council to go on a closed session to consider an offer on the property at forty four Washington Avenue West.
I'll make a motion to approve it with those additions.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Pat, to approve the agenda with those corrections, additions. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries invocation is by Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. Good evening.
Our Father in heaven, we assemble before thee on this beautiful evening. We're grateful for the opportunity which we have to attend and to serve. And we're grateful for those that help this great city of Hutchinson to be a beautiful city and to be able to function in a great place for our children to grow up. We again ask for thy spirit and blessings to be upon us as this meeting is, this comes into this evening. And we pray that any misunderstandings or anything that may be of, of not interest to everyone, that we may be able to be resolved. And we again thank thee, Father, for our free country in which, as we commence to celebrate our independence and freedom, we pray that we will remember those great blessings which we have and that we may commemorate them through our behavior and the way we treat each other and, and those in our family. And we pray for these things in this meeting and we say these things in thy son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
Next, who's Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Somebody move the flag. I think they're technically having to do that.
We are creatures of heaven.
I guess we pledge to the state's flag.
That's what you call being trained.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's more embarrassing to technically.
Probably Chad would be turning around, oh. If I could say that Chad was in my way, I couldn't see.
And in my defense, it's been there every weekday for fifteen years.
Yeah, that's right. All righty, moving on. Uh, recognition of gifts, donations and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything? We do. Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Council, for the great city of Hutchinson. My name is Nick Jacobs and I'm the Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Otsego. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association Awards Committee to present the city of Hutchinson with an Award of Excellence for the Hutchinson Community Bike Fleet. However, before I do that, let me take a few minutes to tell you about the Minnesota Park and Recreation Association. The Minnesota Recreation and Park Association was founded in nineteen thirty seven to foster the growth and development for the parks and recreation profession throughout the state. Presently, we have nearly nine hundred professional, corporate, board commission, student and retiree members throughout the state. Members of the association come from municipal, county, state, district and commercial and private agencies. The Minnesota Recreation and Park Association office is located in Fridley. The MRPA Awards Committee was created in nineteen eighty seven with the purpose of acknowledging individual members and agencies for their excellence in the field of parks, recreation and leisure services. Awards Committee members represent a cross section of the association from the state of Minnesota. The Awards Committee feels it's important to increase awareness of the appreciation for the excellent parks, trails, facilities, recreation programs and services that are occurring in the state of Minnesota. This is why the committee was created. The Awards of Excellence is an annual program for the MRPA that was created to recognize agencies and their staff for an exemplary project that was either implemented in two thousand twenty three or received substantial revisions in two thousand twenty three. MRPA members may nominate a project for the Award of Excellence in seven different categories. Administrative or management strategies, communications, park and facility, programming and events, sponsorships and partnerships, sustainability and volunteer initiatives. Nominations received are then reviewed, evaluated and scored by awards committee members. Only the top scoring nominations are selected to receive an Award of Excellence. On behalf of the MRPA Awards Committee, it is my pleasure tonight to present the Award of Excellence in the sponsorships and partnerships category to the City of Hutchinson Parks, Recreation and Community Education Department for the Hutchinson Community Bike Fleet. There were many factors that led to this project being selected for the award. First, the level of collaboration required to make this a reality was truly amazing. From engaging the schools, surrounding counties, council, city staff and all involved was a tremendous undertaking. Also, what a fantastic program that offers a community access to bikes for traversing the city of Hutchinson's trail network. The Bike Fleet was a project truly embodies community enhancement and speaks to how incredible the city of Hutchinson is. A big congratulations to a deserving community. Thank you for letting me attend tonight's meeting.
Hello, next up, Nat, for us, would you please? Well, is that good? Any others? Mr. Kramer, do you have something for us?
Well, I'm Dave Kramer. I live at one nine six two six Sioux Hills Road. I'm a member of the Odd Fellows. The Odd Fellows is giving a check for five thousand dollars for Odd Fellow Park.
I will take that and we will formally have a resolution at our next meeting to accept that, so. But I'll try that, so. Thank you much. Thank you very much, Dave, for that.
All righty, moving on. Citizens addressing the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. All right, approval in minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of June twelfth, two thousand twenty four.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion by Tim, second by Dave, to approve those minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries consent agenda. This will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A is approval of fire station HVAC improvements. B is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to Saint Anastasia Catholic Church, September thirteenth through the fifteenth, two thousand twenty four. C is approval of issuing short term gambling license to Saint Anastasia Catholic Church, September thirteenth through the fifteenth, two thousand twenty four. D is approval of issuing short term gambling license to the Hutchinson Fire Department Relief Association on September, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty four. E is approval of agreement with Independent School District four twenty three. Uh, there's three things under there to be, one would be the ground maintenance and use of facilities and the birch arena. F is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, four, five. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of final plat for McKay Homestead with favorable planning commission recommendation. Uh, G is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, four, six. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of the final plat for Franklin Street addition with favorable planning commission recommendation. H is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, four, seven. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit to move a single family dwelling from five thirty two Dale Street to six leaning Franklin Street Northwest for residential use in a C three zoning district with favorable planning commission recommendations. I is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, four, eight. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit for a sports performance facility in a Iowa zoning district located at nine forty five Fifth Avenue Southeast with favorable planning commission recommendation. And J is claims appropriation and contract payments, register A.
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries approval of consent agenda two, claims appropriation, contract payments, register B. My son has a check on there for his business, so I will be abstaining.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Second.
By Chad, second by Pat to approve, register B, with me abstaining. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries. All right, skipping down to communications requests and petitions, the Hutchinson Pickleball Association presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, for sir and council members. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. My name is Linda Cool and I live at one five one Alex Drive Southeast Hutchinson, Minnesota. And with me tonight are my pickleball committee members. They can get a little wave. So, I'll go over this to a minute. As we played and then traveled around to different communities and read about other communities in their newspapers developing pickleball courts in their community, we talked amongst ourselves and thought, why not Hutchinson? Let's do this. Our mission is to improve the sport of pickleball by providing a place for multi-generational people to learn and play pickleball while improving their physical and mental health. I'd like to give you just a brief history of how pickleball has grown and changed over the years. It was in nineteen sixty five and Congressman Joel Pritchard, his friends Bill Bell and Barney McCollum from Bainbridge Island, Washington, had a gathering at Joel's house. The kids were bored and they wanted something to do. And Joel said, well, when we were kids, we've all heard that, we invented games. So he found some paddles, some wooden paddles, some broken paddles, uh, wiffle ball, and he sent the kids out on his badminton court and said, go have fun. Two and a half hours later, they were still out there and it was drizzling, mind you, but they were still out there having fun. And pickleball was founded and credited to these three gentlemen that day. The rules have changed a bit over the years as they developed the game, but Joel was a very accomplished man. But at a party in his honor, he said that of all the things he'd done in his life, he was most proud of pickleball because it's made such a lasting impression on so many people. It has made people healthy and happy. Jump ahead to twenty ten and some Hutchinson retirees were traveling to Arizona and they learned how to play pickleball and they brought the game back to Hutchinson. The former Hutchinson leader stated that it was a bit of a shaky start to begin with, but they eventually ended up with thirty two players and kept on going. Fast forward to twenty twenty and ugov dot com says the average age of pickleball players was forty years old. In twenty twenty two, it dropped to thirty eight. And now twenty four and under is the fastest growing pickleball players we have. It's not just a retiree sport anymore. The dynamics are changing. In twenty twenty three, Sports Fitness Association Top Line Performance Participation Report said pickleball is the fastest growing sport in America for the third consecutive year. We've noticed that growth in Hutchinson, too. In fact, Hutchinson Middle School and High School teachers are teaching kids how to play pickleball. Well, our group decided, you know what? Let's just do an informal survey at the Park Elementary Courts and see what is the usage there. So from July twelfth to October thirteenth, two thousand twenty three, we put some sign up sheets on the inside of the warming house door so people could write down how many people were playing at the time. A little bit of a problem there was not everybody had access to the warming house code, so not everybody could put their numbers in. But we figured our weekly low average was two hundred and thirty players. From October second to January twenty fourth, a little bit cold to play outside, so the rec center opened their doors to pickleball players. Lynn reported they had seventy three court reservations, serving one thousand two hundred thirty eight players and an average attendance was seventeen players per time. Those numbers have changed. Now there are six courts there and there are people waiting to play all the time. Another group played at the fairgrounds. Unfortunately, there were no stats available for there, but I'm one that played there. So I can tell you on Mondays and Thursdays, we often had four courts going with people waiting to play there as well. Pickleball has many benefits. One is physical. You get good exercise. We often have more than ten thousand steps in two and a half hours of playing time and can't wait to come back to get more. Another benefit is mental benefit. You're learning new skills and new strategies and making quick decisions on the court so your opponents don't beat you. Big social connection there. I've met so many people playing pickleball and some have become really good friends. And there's also the emotional benefit. You just feel happy playing pickleball and you can't wait to get out there again. Once you've played, you're hooked. It's a multi-generational activity. I've been on the courts when there was a little two year old boy with his mom and dad and he came and he had a little batting tee and a ball and I said, are you going to play baseball? He said, no pickleball. And then he was out there playing with his parents. It was cute. I've also played on the court, not with this gentleman, but he was ninety four years old and I watched him and he was still playing pickleball. People were a little bit nicer to him, didn't make him cover the whole court, but he could still return that ball. Pickleball fills a void for retirees. When you retire, you've got to figure out what are you going to do with all your free time now? Well, pickleball's a nice answer to that question. Pickleball's also very inclusive and all the way up to very competitive levels. Just this morning, we met with Megan's Place Friends and there were fifty of us out there playing pickleball, helping those kids play pickleball. And we've done this several times and they have really improved and just love it. It's so much fun. Pickleball is inclusive for a lot of different people. And we also, after we play pickleball, we tend to gather at some local restaurants for a little bite to eat or a beer to consume. And then some people just find out, why don't I just go do my little errands in Hutchinson and drop money at the businesses in Hutchinson? So pickleball brings money to Hutchinson as well. So after seeing these benefits, we said, yeah, we got to do this. This is going to be awesome. So we made an action plan. After our informal court usage survey, we presented to Lynn Newman and the Park and Rec Advisory Board on June fifth, two thousand twenty three. Their enthusiasm led us to look at different sites in Hutchinson and also to look at other sites that had just built pickleball courts, Delano, Victoria, Litchfield, to see what were the pluses and minuses of the courts that they've built. We decided on Odd Fellows Park as the most viable place in Hutchinson because it's highly visible. It has a lot of open green space. There's already a playground, a shelter, bathroom facilities, parking and a bike trail if you want to use your bike to get to pickleball. We've chosen eight dedicated courts to, to build in Hutchinson because that's the minimum number that you need in order to run a sanctioned tournament. Our next step then would be grant writing, which Lynn Newman has already taken upon her shoulders. Lynn, do you want to speak to that? Where are you?
Some of the things we've talked about, there's a yearly grant that's available. It's the Outdoor Recreation Grant through the Minnesota DNR. And this would be a project that would be an applicable thing that we could write the grant for and utilize. And the largest grant is up to three hundred and fifty thousand and it needs, um, site work and actual concept plan for those things before you can write it. So those are some of the steps that I had shared with the committee in order to be able to even put in for a grant like that. Those are the steps you need to take first.
Thank you. Our next step then was to present to the city council members. And then after that, we'll do some fundraising to help defray the costs of the pickleball courts. And then we hope to collaborate with the Park and Rec Department and the City Council Board to complete this project. Lynn Newman has been very helpful to us. She got the DNR organized to do soil sampling there and they have approved the requirements that are needed there. Then she hired Larson Engineering from White Bear Lake and their estimated cost is five hundred and twenty five thousand to build eight dedicated courts, up to six hundred thousand figuring contingencies and escalation prices. The construction cost analysis includes excavation, post tension concrete, court prep, fences, gates, wind screens, nets and umbrellas for shade. At this time, we are not looking to put lights on there, but there is room if we decide to do that later on. Our vision for pickleball in Hutchinson is to enhance the lives of community members, to increase the interest in pickleball, to maintain and improve community health, to construct a multi-generational amenity, to have more money spent at Hutchinson businesses as people come to Hutch to play pickleball, to provide sanctioned tournaments for Hutchinson pickleball players and people in the surrounding areas, to provide pickleball lessons but still maintain courts that other people can play on. That's a little bit of a problem right now because like even today, when we were working with Megan's friends, um, twelve ladies were waiting to play and they were very gracious to let us finish up our outing and then they would play after that. Um, we also are hoping that the J C Water Carnival Tournament will continue and expand. We hope that this presentation has given you a good idea of where we are at. And at this point, Mike McKim will entertain questions you may have. Thank you.
Mayor Council, any questions in regards to the pickleball courts?
Have you started fundraising, Mike?
No, we needed your approval before we went after it. We are a five oh one already.
Okay.
So it wasn't included in the presentation, but your guys' request is to have it happen next year, correct? That's your desire?
That would be a goal.
Sure. Here we go.
I guess we've had something like this come up this year once already that wasn't in the CIP. My concern, and it's, it's an honest one, is we're starting to do our budgeting. We did the VF field without having a CIP, so that's money that the city had to front, which is the same thing we'd have to do here. I'm all for it. I think it's a great presentation, great deal that you guys are doing. And I get asking us for support before you guys have done any fundraising. I will say the VFW did a bunch of fundraising previous to presenting it to us. So that probably helped them in letting us basically go against our policy and approving something that wasn't in the CIP. And I know Lynn, you voiced it, and I'm probably coming across negative. I'm not against your group at all, but we have a lot of things we have to fund in the city and we do have a formula for that and jumping ahead of that is my opposition.
I can answer a little why we didn't start that fundraising, Pat. We, we approached some of the donors and they said right away, you don't have the approval from the city. What are we doing? I, I, and I said, totally understand. Let's get the, let's get the handshake. We'll consider it and then we can go back to those folks.
Hundred percent understand that.
Yeah.
From our side, it kind of is the other way, you know, it's like getting asked for this without a commitment and.
I also think one of the things that, as I've worked at this group, um, when we first had the conversation, there was no idea of what the project would cost. So Larson Engineering was hired this last fall and then with the completion of their concept plan and things this spring that we received to actually have some hard numbers to give, um, this committee and the council an idea of what the project total would cost, um, just to help with those efforts as well.
So Lynn, what is the timeframe for that grant that you were speaking of? Like, when does it get, like, when's the period?
So the Outdoor Recreation Grant, um, historically, and it's been pretty ongoing for the last numerous years, um, it opens up in January with a completion date of middle of February that you have to have it completed. And then, um, the awards are usually done around June and July for projects. So it's pretty quick, but the things that, um, have to be within that are, you know, an actual concept plan, there has to be a resolution from the city council supporting the project and has all the funding mechanisms laid out pretty substantially for the funding to even occur. So again, that grant is up to three hundred and fifty thousand and, um, we have received that particular grant for some other projects within our system in the past. Not within the last couple of years, we haven't put in for it, but it's the same grant we looked at for the splash pad funding, um, but the reason why we chose not to is because it was only up to three hundred and fifty thousand.
Lynn, is there a timeframe on when that money needs to be spent if it's awarded?
Yeah, so it is within, so you put it in, um, so if I would have put it in this year for twenty twenty four, it'd have to be spent the next year. So it has to be, that's where that city council resolution of support comes in. So it has to be within that next year. Um, sometimes they'll give you two years to do it, but the last one was for projects that had to be completed in twenty twenty five. So if it, if it goes along the same pattern, it'll be a twenty twenty five, um, application for a twenty twenty six project is how that would work.
I know we incurred some costs already just for the, you know, to go out.
Studying.
And I know, Pat, you kind of asked about that and, you know, but, uh, I think that was, if I remember right, eighteen, eighteen thousand. But for us to, or for Lynn to go out and get, you know, grants and stuff, I know we had to do that. Yeah, but, you know, the cart in front of the horse, as they say, but, uh, you know, I'm all for this, but I don't know if we could pull it off to have it done by twenty twenty five. That's.
Well, if they did the fundraising for it, I think we could, you know, but that's asking a lot, you know, like.
Right.
In order to get the grant, it doesn't sound like it would happen next year, but that would lessen your burden as far as fundraising goes a lot.
It would greatly, so we would know by spring. We could still, I mean, if you, if you knew by spring and we needed X number and they came through with that number, you could still, towards the end of summer, have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the application would be for twenty twenty five, but for a twenty six project, that grant, yeah. Because the, the money's come out the next year.
Okay.
And we would need to green light that before you apply for the grant even.
Correct.
So does that resolution become a binding resolution where you're putting dollars and cents into it? Or is it say, it's a positive thing for the community and the council supports the general idea of it? Or are we talking, we're committing to it?
The resolution would be for support of the project. And then the other piece of it would be, obviously there's a funding gap. If you would be awarded the three hundred and fifty thousand, the project's six hundred thousand. So within the, um, application, you would write down all your methods of funding. And then if there was, um, an allocation from the council, that would be represented at some dollar amount within the resolution.
Um, Tim, I guess the short answer is you can always deny a grant or you can always reject a grant. Usually doesn't look good for future requests, but that, that sometimes happens where the city receives a grant and realizes they can't make up the difference and, and, uh, what happens to reject it? This is kind of more for individuals in attendance for the council to think about and what Pat's talking about when he talks about a CIP. So every year we do a five year plan for any large capital items. This would fall under that, that description of a large capital item. And so the city, you know, tried to obviously be fiscally responsible. We plan out. We plan out a lot of our large projects. We do that over a five-year period. Sometimes it's ten, fifteen, twenty years. Something like this is currently not in our five-year plan. So that's when we talk about, there's no funding mechanism, there's been no money set aside to it, there's been no study of. How to get the money, how to team the money, where the money would come from, what projects would potentially be delayed, pushed back. Or if it even, you know, could be done. We haven't really even analyzed that cost of it. So that's the the one challenge when we start seeing next year, it's like, okay, to do it next year, then we would have to cancel or push back. Most likely several projects if we couldn't come up with a funding source. And so we haven't even had the time to really study it. Now, the good thing, part of the reason you probably came and gave us a request is that. We are just starting the budget process for next year and for our five-year C I P. The big question for the council and part of what we need to look at is. When would we want to put that in, when, what, if we were to do it, and what makes sense? And I think that plays into a lot of when you apply for the grant. You know, so something to think about, you could essentially say, yes, we'll do it, and the city will kick an X amount of money. That gives everybody an idea of what that gap is that needs to be filled, whether it's through grants or donations. And and I would say it's up to the council to dictate what year they are trying to pursue that with.
I was also on the driving factors behind hiring Larson Engineering was to get some actual numbers as well so we could add it. We do see a need, but it is not currently in the C I P that we have.
I would have no problem with it going on the C I P, but I'd have to go on the backend like every other project. Because that's the way all these projects work, but then that doesn't fit your timeline. So if they wanted to bump up their timeline, they should just do a bunch of fundraising and then we can apply for the grant. And then it can get bumped up because it wouldn't affect the C I P.
And that's that's how some of these other projects have been done, is they've come in with a third source or with a alternative source to help fund it and help push a project out.
I think the presentation by you guys and Michael and Mike.
Fantastic. It's hard for us tonight to sit here and go, yep.
I mean, because it, that's just not fiscally responsible for our. But I do like the footwork you've done. Obviously, there's a huge interest. And, you know, we've got a little bit of time here yet since the grant doesn't get, has to be submitted, you said, January to February. Gives us some time, as Matt said, the budget is just hitting us and.
Yeah, I mean, it gives them time to plan, to plan for it. We can show scenarios on, you know. I mean, if it's our idea, our goal to have some sort of grant money help fund this, we know that the earliest then is twenty twenty-six. And so we can run numbers based off of a twenty twenty-six project, twenty twenty-seven project. We could even show you what a twenty twenty-five project does. That's part of what we do when we're planning and putting these plans out there. So we provide all the scenarios and it shows what the impact is on the budgets and for other projects. And I think that's the big question that hasn't been done yet by staff or the councils to really look at that.
So does anybody in the council have heartburn if it is funded outside of the C I P with grant and fundraising dollars?
I'm not willing to go there yet. You said that the budget's coming up and the C I P's always been this kind of balancing act. And one, I appreciate seeing a room full of people supporting something because I, we don't see that often.
We should talk about pickleball every council meeting. We have a lot of people that show up.
So we, I see the support for it. It's learning the mechanism or sitting down and having as a council, sitting down and saying. Listen, how are we going to approach this moving on? Because there's projects on the C I P that some people agree with and some don't. And how that will shake out is going to be.
Right, Tim, I'm saying outside of the C I P.
Outside of the C I P, you know, if it was a fundraising effort, a grant. Would it need to stop something like that? It's a community effort to build something that's positive for the community.
I'm not opposed to outside the C I P either. If we can figure out, you know, get some harder numbers in. The three fifty, we've gotten it before, so best case scenario, you get that again. And then you're looking at another two fifty to three hundred, depending on where those, you know, how it all falls out. But, you know, I think we just, like I said. So we've got some time here to make this work.
I think the probably short answer for you is that we'll have Matt run some scenarios for the council. So we can see what we can come up with.
I think we as the committee would want a vision to get some of it in the C P I. I really do. We're looking for support so we can go to donate donations, go after some donations. So say, yes, we have supported the city, and whether it's twenty-six, twenty, or twenty-five, twenty-six. This thing.
Right, Mike, but what we're saying is like, there probably isn't going to be money in the C I P for it in the next two years.
I understand, but I would, I would like to get it on there as a possibility.
You know, and I and I can say, we actually had a strategic planning session on recreation two months ago. And I think the two projects that were identified by the council as something they wanted to see done in the next five years was a splash pad and. And expansion of pickleball. Those are the two biggest items. I think the big question that we don't know yet is exactly when that would take place. And that's probably what we need to work on.
As far as the C I P, if the city were to front that money, Matt, we could, that could be possibly done. And then we recover that money when the C I P, if it's if it's set up for twenty twenty-six. City could get that back. Am I wrong, or is that? We've done some.
We've done unique things, the fun projects, all I know, so it's, I think we pride ourselves on finding different ways. I mean, one, it's not obviously at the level of six hundred thousand, but we're still getting paid today for the grant. For the, yeah, the grant, not the grandstand, but the. The stage at the Riverside, that Riverside.
Each year from Riverside for.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, so that's ten, fifteen years of where we're still paying off a project, so.
Bottom line, Mike, is that we we really appreciate you guys coming in. We're gonna probably run some scenarios and see if we can get it done for you guys.
Appreciate it.
But we can't really give you an answer tonight because we gotta, we gotta look at all the variables.
I understand. It's in front of you now. Yep, that's what we needed.
It's in our court.
And Mike, 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 hold on. So and in that vein though, like you could go about it like the Huskies did where. You get verbal commitments for some big donations. That's what the Huskies did and, you know, that can help with the grant. Because then they would help the resolution, you know, like it would just get everything.
It was a very good presentation. Thank you. Oh, a little bit more?
Yep, we just want to thank you for your time and your consideration of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, annual meeting to receive comment and input on stormwater pollution. Presentation planned for the city of Hutchinson.
Hey, you guys aren't going to hang around for this?
I thought, I think John thought everyone showed up for this presentation.
You're giving John a complex because he's going to give his report and you guys all walk out on him.
Evening, Councilor, Mr. Mayor. He thought for the first time.
I don't have pickleball, little pickleball guy and paddles. I mean, I know it's a hard one to follow, but certainly it's something we do every year. Thank you for those that are sticking around. I certainly appreciate that. What we'll do is we'll just run through the presentation here. I'll try to be short with it. Yeah, I got you.
Mike, Mike, you want it?
I think it's working.
Thank you.
But in any can, in any event, please feel free to jump in with any questions you may have. And certainly with things moving forward too, we've been touching on a lot of things related to stormwater here within the last year. Stormwater resiliency, those types of things, the modeling that we've been doing, the modeling that we're going to be doing more of. All that stuff interrelates to this, lakes and rivers, all those things are interconnected. But in any event, something we do annually, just wanted to provide you an update. With twenty twenty-three's M S four municipal separate storm sewer system activities. So one of the key components that we implement as part of our program is public education outreach. And includes a number of different outreach methods. So we utilize things such as Park and Rec Community Head Brochure. We always have a page in that. Stormwater webpage, there's information that we glean from other agencies, if that's the state of Minnesota, federal. But we also have information on there for residents, businesses, including stuff about rain barrels, stuff about. What you can do in your own lawn, those types of tips is also made available through that stormwater brochure. Stormwater best management practice details are also distributed to all the builders when they come in for a grading permit. And then annual public meeting. So any anytime we see a different opportunity to try to get this information in front of people, we try to do that. And certainly, I think over time, I get questions from people that I would never think care anything about stormwater. People eventually over time will see enough of it that they'll start, it'll start sinking in and paying more attention to it. So it's been great to see over time. We also include things like storm drain marker programs where volunteers can come in. It's a good activity for people of all ages to be able to get out outside. Understand and see firsthand the type of material that collects and accumulates on storms, storm sewer grades. And then it also includes information about signage, educational displays that we use as part of our public education and outreach. We do that for things for rain gardens, B M Ps, best management practices, prairies, parks, all kinds of different things. Second component, illicit discharge detection and elimination. It's a big system. There's some numbers up there on the screen. It's wide and vast. There's a lot that goes into our infrastructure. And ultimately, the city's tasked with maintaining that to ensure that it continues to work. We've done things over time, as many of you are well aware of, with things such as the recreation, like the rec center pond. Those things that are really impactful over a large geographical area to much smaller things as well. From responding to an individual catch basin that's blocked. Like I said, really broad network of infrastructure that's there. And ultimately, it's all intended for us to own and operate it in a way that doesn't negatively impact our public water bodies within the region. Self for Crow River, public wetlands, and also McKeon Creek. We do that a number of different ways. So we maintain a map, we maintain infrastructure. We also respond to complaints that we receive from either city staff or people within the community related to illicit discharge. When I say illicit discharge, that means anything that's not fully comprised of stormwater. It doesn't fall out of the sky. It is essentially, could potentially contaminate stormwater. Leaves, trees, funny leaves fall out of the sky too, but when they accumulate on the ground and you let them get wet and decompose, decompose over time. Those can also create issues as well. So in response to those things, we track all type of illicit discharge reports and complaints that we receive. We track everything from the phone call, the data was received, who sent it, how we responded to it, was it a violation? Did we ultimately issue any type of corrective action? All the way down to actually notifying the state of Minnesota if it's serious enough through the use of the Minnesota Duty Officer Reporting System. This includes information from the public education component of it. Educational materials, helping people understand what it is. So if you see staining, if you see some sort of discoloration on a catch basin, somebody, it looks like somebody dumped something there that they shouldn't have. Information's included basically throughout our stormwater program, brochures, website, anywhere and everywhere we can put those things. So that people are aware, you know, so that they, here's the phone number, make it easy, try to make it as simple as possible for them. If you see something that's out of place or something that's running down the street, down the gutter line. Or something on a catch basin grate that looks like staining, somebody dumped something down there that shouldn't go there. We try to make it as easy, as simple as possible for people to get in touch with us so that we can respond, so that we can clean up. We can try to prevent that spill from reoccurring in the future. We do that a number of different ways. Through complaints is one. We also inspect our system. We periodically will have to check outfalls, check our ponds. When we see discoloration on any one of those things, that might prompt us to look further upstream to try to find a source of a potential illicit discharge. If that's trash or some sort of oily substance, or it could be something I haven't seen it here myself. But paint that is running in a stream, where did that come from? And you trace it back to a pipe, you trace it upstream in your system. And it's it's incredible that you can actually find the sources of these things, especially when they're that long, long lasting and they can travel a long ways. Once you put something in water, it's incredible how far it'll it'll travel. Construction site stormwater runoff control is another important component of our program as well. We permit anything basically over two hundred square feet of disturbed area. Seems pretty small. But in general, that is intended to catch basically a single family garage or a single stall garage in size of ten by twenty garage. That's the threshold required to get a building permit within the city. So that's the same threshold we use for land disturbing permits as well. And like I said, we also distribute information when any, any, anytime someone comes in to pull a permit specific to these types of things and why it's important. Common types of issues we see inlet protection, some of these best management practices just need maintenance. Those are by far the most common that we see. We update our system map. Anytime we reconstruct a street, those system attributes are changed. Inverts, elevations, tops, castings, pipe sizes, all those things directly affect our system. As we go through the modeling, the resiliency project that we're just kicking off here for phase two, that's important. Those things are real specific as far as how well our system functions, how big of an area it'll serve. And ultimately, in anticipating and trying to understand where your weak points are within your system. So mapping those and keeping tabs of all of those different pieces of infrastructure is critical to what we do. Another thing we do within our own operations is pollution prevention, good housekeeping. It is exactly what it sounds like. We try to prevent that pollution from ever getting into the roadway. A lot of the things we already have in place, we had in place well before, the city was an M S four community, street sweeping. We were doing those things just because it, it's a good thing for the system. It minimizes the amount of maintenance that you have to do on the system. But also too, it is just a good housekeeping idea. Going out there and collecting it, collecting that material that we deposit over time. You know, we put sand or we put sand down on the street in the wintertime. This is good housekeeping. We're just going out there to get it back. And then that sand ultimately screened out so that all the trash can be hauled away. And then we try to reuse that sand. We won't just take it to the landfill. So there does have some reuse value with those things, but ultimately, we try to minimize our impacts. By one, using it in wintertime, two, collecting it off, so that it doesn't end up in our pipes and in our streams. We also look at other things too as part of our good housekeeping process. We do those inspections. It's to help identify, could our system be causing problems in itself? Is a stormwater pond eroding? Now, some stormwater pond meant to treat stormwater now can also be contributing or causing a problem to stormwater. So we we inspect those systems, inspect our ponds and pipes and our outfalls to make sure that those aren't also contributing to potential stormwater degradation. Street sweeping map, we go basically street by street methodically throughout the course of the summertime. And we start as soon as we can in the springtime, once the snow is gone and out of the gutter lines. And then we just keep sweeping, keep sweeping. It's something that happens, this, what you see here is just for the months of basically July and August last year. We'll just keep going until we hit every street, and then once we get through it all, we start over. That's something that we continue to do just because it makes a lot of sense. It keeps that stuff out of the pipes. Trying to collect that off the roadway is a lot, lot easier, a lot cheaper than actually having to go dredge it out of a pond or jet it out of a pipe. We also provide additional information to people, if that's builders or developers or even an individual homeowner. Like I said, things that we do on a small scale, what can I do to try to have a more earth-friendly lawn? Native prairies, rain gardens, how you redirect your flow, disconnecting things from, from a downspout from running down the driveway. Hey, why don't you let that run into your lawn where your vegetation will actually soak up that volume of water? So those things are important and we answer those questions all the time. We also, we're also involved in other things such as the Minnesota City Stormwater Coalition, works with the League of Minnesota City. Advocating for things relative to our regulatory programs within our state. And then also more at the local level, One Watershed One Plan. This is something that we've referenced before. But the One Watershed One Plan is looking at managing water at the watershed scale. So it extends all the way to Wilmer, clear over to the metro, cities, counties. Those that want to be involved have an opportunity to get involved and understand what we're doing to help improve the drainage and function. And the quality associated within that watershed as well on a watershed-based scale. So that's an important thing that we've been working on. It's something that the county's been integral in and making happen. They recently adopted the One Watershed One Plan. They've taken it to the next step. Where there's actually implementation funding that will be coming available to help implement these things, such as building a rain garden. Doing things on the, actually on the watershed or on the land that helps minimize stormwater impacts. So with that watershed-based implementation funding, that source is intended to help fund portions of the One Watershed One Plan. Actions that have been identified within that watershed area. We continue to do things such as pond cleanouts, lake river basin nutrient trading, those things that we're doing. On the lakes and river basin upstream of the community, directly affect and benefit. On the lakes and river basin upstream of the community, directly affect and benefit the, or complement the things that we're doing within the, within the city itself. So the ponds, the maintenance, the inspections, all those things that we do are all interrelated. Just because it happens here, we're, we're taking care of our own business as best we can. Now we're trying to promote those things upstream, outside of our jurisdictional area and working with partners, the SWCD through One Watershed One Plan. Other counties, Renville County, what are, are there things that we can help them to, to do so that we see more of this happen on the land upstream of the city? So that we see a little cleaner water that comes into town. All of those things kind of coalesce and come together so that over time, we're able to actually start to see a marginal measurable improvement. And it does, it takes everybody. It takes every big town, small town, county. Basically anyone who owns property within that watershed can have potential to have a benefit or an impact to that water itself. With that, as I said, try to be concise here. So any questions as you guys may have? Once again, last year, last year it happened, the MPCA did not have annual report forms ready, their system was broken. Year two, same thing. So next year, maybe, just maybe, we might actually have to file three annual reports at the same time. So with that, it was just the, just the presentation today and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Good job.
Yeah.
We'll keep on keeping on.
John, have you had any bad dumping settle lately or?
We get a, probably the last bad one I saw, I think it might have actually occurred last year. Was ash, someone was dumping ash into a catch basin in the backyard. They were burning garbage and they were taking that burnt ash and dumping it into a catch basin. Why? I have no idea. Dumping garbage into a catch basin is bad enough, but then to cook it down into an ashes and then dump it in there just doesn't make any sense to me. But otherwise, yeah, it's an occasional leaky dumpster. Small things, but certainly if left unattended and to, you know, occur for a long period of time, yeah, that can have a pretty significant impact that people just don't see. But like I said, over time or in aggregate, that can certainly have a larger impact. It, it's just that goes unnoticed. So but in general, yeah, we don't see a lot of those, which is good. And generally when we do hear about them, it's pretty prompt. We can get there, respond to it, figure out what the source of it is. We're, we're good that way. I mean, we're pretty proactive as far as identifying and inspecting our system. That's important as well. Just to note like, hey, we got a nice clean system. It's a lot easier to tell when a room's dirty when your room's always clean. You know, if it's dirty all the time, you can't even tell it's dirty because it always looks that way. Well, in our community, it's, it's really nice that way is that we have a good functioning system. When there's a problem, we know about it right away.
Okay. Anything else for John?
Thank you.
Creekside year end report, Andy.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Looks like I'm batting cleanup tonight on the presentations. Hopefully I don't bore you to death. Like John said, I'll try to keep it short and sweet and, and to the point. Again, here, here to give you the 2023 year end report for Creekside soils operations, which encompasses both the refuse fund and the compost fund. I'm not going to read through this, but Creekside soils mission statement is here on the screen for you to, to take a peek at if you so wish. I think stands pretty true today. This was established. I'm guessing it's probably close to 15 years ago. So still, still stands true today. Jumping into operations, we'll start with the refuse fund and just to start out to, to give a bit of a definition on the refuse fund and what that all entails is the refuse fund is, is where the city charges its residents the monthly garbage fee for the collection and the disposal of the municipal solid waste, otherwise known as MSW. And the sour separated organics, which is often referred to as curbside organics. The garbage fees collected from the residents are then used to pay the contracted hauling and the collection service for both those materials. The garbage ends up at the landfill. And the curbside organics ends up at Creekside. So just a little clarification on what the refuse fund is really all about. So just looking at the materials that are generated throughout the community. And again, this is just residential. This is not necessarily, it's not commercial tonnage related at all. So looking back at the last few years, rather stable in terms of the garbage tonnage, which is the, the black line up on top. For some apparent reason, there was about a 200 ton per year jump for 2023. I don't work directly with the garbage side of, of, of the world. Maybe it's probably more Matt and Andy. I don't really know how much involvement they have. But I'm not exactly sure what that 200 ton jump was all about. On the organic side of it, we're seeing a slightly downward trend here over the last couple of years, coming in at just under 1300 ton. Could it be debated that our ton is dropping is because of the contamination that was once in the material is now heading towards the trash? Could be debated. I don't think it's obviously to the extent of 200 tons because we're not seeing a 200 ton drop on the organics. So all we said, all in all, pretty, pretty steady as far as, as what's been happening. Blue, blue line there on the bottom is just the residential, excuse me, the residuals that we screen out of the curbside organics in tons that ultimately does end up at the landfill. That's been relatively stable. Unfortunately, even with the decrease in, in the incoming curbside organics tonnage. So I'll touch on the, on the campaign, the compost right campaign here a little bit, but hopefully we can start to turn these numbers around a little bit. And just a little side note, since the facility opened, just shy of 42,000 tons of residential curbside organics or SSOM have been tipped and processed at Creekside. So just a quick little update on the compost at right campaign. Cassandra Myfels, our public outreach and education coordinator gave, gave you an update here a couple of months ago, earlier this spring, but just kind of circling back as a, as a brief overview on what's been done or what was done in 2023. Facebook page was established and created. She's updated the, the composting webpages on the city site. Updated and refreshed the new residence composting guide. That was something that was originally established back in probably the early 2000s and hadn't been touched since. A lot of things have evolved in the last, just like everything else, everything evolves. But as far as what's acceptable, what's not acceptable and just new language being used. So that was a, a really good, good thing to get done. She's attended numerous community events, sitting in an informational booth. She's, she's regularly at the farmer's market. Has attended some master gardener events and also does small group or even private group discussions, conversations. One of them here was, was at a local church, showed interest and, and wanted her to come in. So she's also been giving multiple tours, our tours of the operation audit creeks. I don't say necessarily on a regular basis, but a little more regular than, than it has been done or conducted in the past. So, and then the, really the other thing for late in 23 was we designed and implemented a curbside cart inspection program where there were actually boots on the ground out in front of the collection trucks peeking into the cars, seeing what's in there. This tag here over on the left is what was put on the carts. We, they didn't do like all citywide. It was just, that's, that's a feat to, to try to undertake. But there was basically the, the you rock, need some work and the oh no, check boxes that would let residents know how, how they were doing. Part of the camp, not necessarily the campaign, but the, the program itself is we conduct physical waste audits. So of the curbside organic material that are tipped at the facility, we grab a small sample of that, basically two skid loader buckets. Dump that on the floor and manually separate, separated into all these categories here, here you see on the left. Just to kind of gauge, give us a baseline on, on, and basically our efforts, our initiatives, are we gaining traction? Are they producing any positive results? This is a one week snapshot from, from an audit conducted in 23. If we look back at 2022, so we've conducted one in 2024. Unfortunately, there's no consistency or rhyme or reason to anything. You know, we were hoping to kind of paint, you know, Mondays being a pretty decent day or Wednesdays being the best day as, as it should be Friday here in this case, but they're all over the board. So that really kind of tells us it's, it's not necessarily an, a citywide issue in terms of education and contamination. It's probably more so down to just a handful that are contaminating. Maybe not every week that their cart is out, but it's, I think it's more of a, of a spot. Spot issue, not necessarily a citywide issue. So as you can see, we're ranging from the Friday route on, on this particular week was a little over four and a half percent contamination all the way up to just shy of 13% on the Tuesday route. So just jumping into the budget here, the, the refuse fund is, is pretty, is, is rather stable. To be honest, as you show, the, the change from 22 to 23, a little over 6% increase in revenues with a little over 6% increase in, in expenditures. The one notable here was on the 23 budget. We were, we budgeted for just shy of a $1.2 million loss. That would be the CASP project that did not happen. We were able to procure some of the equipment that supports that system, but then those expenses ultimately got moved to 24. And that construction project will, will be happening here shortly within the next weeks. And just to point out, refuse fund has contributed $715,000 to the tree disease infestation mitigation fund since 2010, when that head started. Compost fund. So the compost fund is essentially the drop off site or the actual compost site of Creekside soils where residents and contractors alike can drop off yard waste, wood waste, brush waste. We also accept concrete block top. All of the materials we accept, we're able to process into a sellable, finished, usable product. Majority of, of the, of the yard waste and the wood materials we receive ultimately end up getting packaged, bagged and, and shipped. Or excuse me, distributed shipped throughout a state, 13 state area. We do do a fair amount of bulk soils and mulch material. The, the concrete and blacktop get crushed into bitcon, classified heritage and that, that is sold, it actually sells pretty, pretty well as, as a bulk material. If you haven't seen it out and about, the brands that we package under the Creekside name is, are the Splendor Grove, the Creekside actual trademark brand name, and then the Wonder Blend. So just looking at the front side of, of that process with incoming materials. Fairly flat. We see the scene incoming, total incoming tonnages drop off a little bit here the last couple of years. And that's, that's due to drought. Just not as much grass clippings coming into the facility. City of Hutch totals, the City of Hutch generated materials have been fairly stable actually over the last three, four years. Down here on the bottom, we show a breakdown of, of the makeup of those materials. 56% of the total comes in as yard waste, whereas 44% is wood waste. But you look at the City of Hutch total, which accounts for 42% of the total tonnage inbound. We're only receiving 1,600 tons of yard waste, the grass, grass and leaf clippings. Whereas we're seeing just shy of 3,600 tons of wood waste, which is, I wouldn't say unheard of, but that's a pretty, pretty substantial variance or difference between the two. As you start to look ahead at these others, what we generate out of McLeod County, which is the other municipalities that have compost sites is pretty much a break, a 50 50 split between the two. We are contracted with the City of St. Cloud to receive their yard waste materials from their city owned and operated compost site. They were bringing in 3,350 tons of yard waste, whereas it's 760 tons of, 761 tons of, of wood waste. Upon occasion, it's not very regular, but we do work with, it's listed here as a City of Maple Grove because that's where the material ultimately came from. But it's actually a private composter that receives the City of Maple Grove's material. They at times get inundated, don't have the space. So we work out an arrangement to where that material is, is trucked down to us for, for processing. So all that material that we do process or most of it, I should say, ultimately ends up in a bag. So here's just a, a graphic kind of depicting a little bit of a roller coaster on our bag sales over the, over the last handful of years. I keep 2015 in there because that was basically the, the peak of our bag sales volume. At over two and a half million bags. That's when we were co-packing for our customer for big box products. And I'm going to say finally realized, but we realized it was low margin, really not worth turning the tires on a lot of that. Or to conduct a lot of that wear and tear on the equipment. So we cut them off in, in 2015, leading into 16, it was coming in with that just shy of 1.3 and that's our products. So they're moving forward a little, a little bit of a roller coaster ride, but you notice in 2021, a little bit of a spike and that's COVID related when everybody was at home, couldn't do anything else but spend money on, on their landscape or, or start a garden. We started to tail off in 22 and in 23, once again, 22 was basically chalking it up as back to reality. Not, nothing too alarming. We didn't lose any customers at that point. So it's just more or less a, a back to reality. Whereas 23, we did lose a, a major customer. And we were able to backfill a lot of the business, but we didn't, obviously didn't cover it all to, to maintain at least 22 level of sales or increase. I don't touch a, a bit on that here in a second. Just a breakdown, just kind of show you how we were able to backfill that, that void of that customer loss. 2022's breakdown is here on the right where it shows the 1.25 million bags of the Creekside brands and only 143,000 of private labels or the co-packing business. 2023, the year that we first lost that customer, how the, how the dynamics changed it. We weren't notified until, I want to recall it being November of 22 that we did not have the 23 business for this customer. So at that point, it's basically the 11th hour. A lot of buyers have their business established for the upcoming year and it's just tough to, 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 to fill that void. So we actually reached out to some co-packing customers that just essentially letting them know that we have capacity and for the most part it, it worked out fairly well. We still, again, came in a little lighter than we had in 22, but a lot better than it could have been, or it, right, a lot better than it could have been. Back up, make sure you can miss one there. So on the compost budget again, 2023 budget there in the middle shows a little over 3 million in sales revenue. That's still included this customer's projected sales. Didn't have enough time in the year to pull that out of the budget and get everything situated. So it stayed in the budget, but coming in at where we actually came in at 2023, just over 2.6 million in, in year in sales. With a net revenue loss of 323,000. Gross profit margin 30%, which is still pretty much right on par for, for where we have been falling with actual, as you typically budget on the conservative side. At that 26.6 and most often than not, we do come in at that 30 or, or just north of. So then again, the compost fund transfers to the general fund just shy of 1.5 million since 2009, when that started. 23 mentionables, I spoke a little bit about the compost at right campaign, the public education outreach coordinator position was added in 23 and has been awesome to, to date here. So look forward to, to see where that goes here moving forward. Bag sales volume decreased in 23 under 22 by, that should actually be 6% with the loss of that major customer. And then late in 23, we were able to, we had enough raw material, enough raw concrete block top to crush bitcon. So we have had at, at year end or year beginning here in 24, about 20,000 ton available and I, I don't know where it is at exactly, but about half of that is gone here so far this year. Looking forward, looking ahead to 24, which is now about halfway's over. Construct and implement the new CASP system. As I mentioned, that should be getting underway. There was talks of actually starting some dirt work here later this week. I don't know if the plans are still on or if it'll be next week or it'll, it'll be happening soon nonetheless. Another thing is just the continuation of establishing a baseline for the outreach efforts on the curbside program. Basically trying to figure out what works, what doesn't, where should we really exhaust our resources, which, which we stick with. So that'll be a learning curve here as, as time goes on with that program. And that kind of going back to the loss of that major customer in 23, which coincidentally did not, we did not regain that business for 24. So a lot of the products that that customer took was colored mulch. So now we have a large stockpile of essentially abundance of wood mulch that needs to find a home. And not to get too far into the weeds, but the, the wood market or the mulch market is, is rather flooded here as of late, not necessarily because of storms. But just because of burn plant dynamics, there's plants that are shutting down, not taking as much material, which then floods, floods the, the market on what's out there for, for available materials. So worse comes to worse with that material. We can grind it down and compost it out and turn it into a useful product, but ideally we would like to sell it as is and, and generate a few pennies of revenue on it. So with that, that's what I have. Tried to go as fast as I could. Any questions?
Andy, do you got those little buckets or like on the counters or?
We do, yes. I don't have Cassandra.
Okay.
Cassandra has them.
Where can you get them?
Your best bet is to talk to her and I don't know if you're going to get to see her for three months. You're going on maternity leave any day now. So we, she's been working, she talked with the things to Mike, worked with Josie. So Josie's going to help fill in. So one way that you need one, yeah, we'll work on getting something figured out. Get in touch with you.
Oh, I was going to say, I see that Runnings is selling Creekside products.
Yes, yep. They've been, Runnings has been a long time customer. One of the, one of the things on the mulch side, I think, mulch side of the business, we do not have their colored mulch business. So with the abundance we have, we're, we're definitely going after it. with the abundance we have, we're, we're definitely going after that here this fall. Hopefully we can get, get in the door.
Anything else for Andy?
Well, I can say the composted correct or right program on my Facebook feed comes through daily. Uh, and I get corrected by Cassandra, because like, well, somebody asked, where are the big bags?
Yeah.
And that was a concern because a lot of people said, well, where'd the big bags go? And that's what they wanted. So I, I, you know, well, I talked to her kind of behind the scenes and said, will they be bringing them back? They were extremely popular and they were gonna discuss that, but.
Yeah, that, that is one thing. We didn't know necessarily how well received just switching to the small bags would go, you know? From what we gathered to this point, the majority love it. They like it. They, they don't miss the big bags, but there are a handful that do miss the big bags. So at that point, we just try to weigh out our options and, and more or less do what makes sense if we bring the big bag.
And that gets back to where we still have visitors wanting to pick up garbage bags from the city and then realize that.
They're compost bags.
They're compost bags.
We, we did, we did contact Dave actually at Ace, and he, he actually carried that exact same brand of the bigger bag. Um, it was rather steep in price, not by Dave's fault by any means, but we talked to him and and he lowered the price. He's like, yeah, this is a community effort. He's like, I don't know why he lowered the price too, but it definitely reasonable. So he has the big bags.
That's great information. And like I said, the composted right, uh, just that program alone, it's the awareness. The library just had a large group of kids there for it. And so it is a popular program and.
Yeah, and she's, she's doing a great job, especially with the social, social media and just the, the outreach in general.
It, it's just the things you learn on there. Half the things I didn't know.
Right.
And you know, it's, it's, you can educate your kids and well, it makes the community better.
Right. Yeah. Good to hear that. Appreciate that.
Anything else for Andy? Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, moving on, uh, no unfinished business, new business, uh, extending temporary suspension of city ordinance ninety-three point forty-one minimal keeping restrictions to September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four for prairie restoration in Hutchinson Parks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, back in November of last year, you guys had temporarily suspended the animal keeping restrictions, uh, from May first through July thirty-first for this year for the goats on the girl um, prairie restoration project we had, um, due to a very unseasonably wet spring and summer. Um, our project has been delayed a little bit. Um, we don't want the goats to be swimming, so we have, um, postponed, um, some of our other parks. They were able to successfully graze Roberts Park and that park, that park is completed. Um, they were gonna then move to Riverside and then Miller's Woods, but, um, after assessing the conditions of both of those parks, it's too wet for the goats to graze. Um, so I'm here tonight to ask that we temporarily, or extend the temporary suspension of that ordinance um, through September fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-four, just to give us ample time. My other request would be that, um, during our grazing efforts at Roberts Park, it was discovered that, um, but there's a large pond, which we knew was there, but it did decrease the amount of acreage that the goats had to graze. And per our price we received from goats on the goal, um, we do have some more acreage that we can utilize within our budgeted um, price for the goats on the goal company. Um, so we looked at some different locations and we would like to add East River Park as another place to graze. So my other request would be to add that location to the temporary suspension for the goat project.
Motion approved.
I'll second.
Motion by Tim. Second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Lynn. Um, rescheduling of the August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four city council meeting.
So, um, as happens, seems to happen about every other year, um, our second meeting in August is primary election day. And because of that, we cannot have a, a public meeting take place between six and eight P M. Um, in years past, we've moved our council meeting up to, to four o'clock um, on the day of, and so we could do that again, or you could look to reschedule to a completely different day. Um, the one thing to note is that we were looking to have a strategic planning session before that too. Um, so I'm not sure what people's schedules are. Um, if you wanted to move that one up to two, then have your regular meeting at four. And if that doesn't work for people, we can look to reschedule the strategic planning session for a different day and just have the regular council meeting at four o'clock, unless you wanna look at a completely different day. So.
Can we bump the strategic session to the twenty-seventh and just bump the thirteenth up in the day?
Potential. We might have to push it back because we have, I think, a budget workshop on the twenty-seventh, and so it might be September or something. We, we don't need to make that decision right now. Um, we can just cancel that strategic planning session and we'll just, I can come back with a different day for that, so.
So should we start just bumping that up to four o'clock, the thirteenth?
Yep, for, if, if that's your desire, unless you wanna go a different day. Otherwise, I would have the regular council meeting at four o'clock on the thirteenth.
I'd make a motion to set that meeting at, on the thirteenth for four o'clock.
And then cancel our strategic planning session?
For that day.
Yep.
I'll second it. Well, this by Chad, second by myself, the meeting, or is it the meeting for four o'clock on August thirteenth? Any other discussion?
On that note, Matt, do we have any primaries that are local?
I don't think so. Not for the city, other county. One more county commissioner's seat.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Will say nay. Motion carries. Alright, uh, we have American Legion Post. They want a gambling license for, um, flank bar and char.
If it's Legion Post ninety-six and H Y B A, we're looking to go to the new flank bar and char location on one, one thousand highway seven west affected August first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion approved.
I have a second.
Sorry, I missed the who?
Motion.
Pat? And Chad? Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve that gambling license. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries. Uh, we have the governance, we have the City of Hutchinson, the financial report and investment reports for May of two thousand and twenty-four Hutchinson Housing RE Development Authority Board minutes from May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, Planning Commission minutes from May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. The Parks Recreation Community Education Board minutes from May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four and June third, two thousand and twenty-four. Chief Gifferson, you have anything for us?
First off, traditionally, since I was promoted to chief, anytime we hired a new officer, I usually bring them in and introduce them to the council. I think it's a great, great idea. Um, recently, we had one of our part-time office, officers request to move from part-time to full-time to backfill one of our empty positions. And, uh, she has done that, but I'm not gonna make her come here and stand in front of you one more time. So uh, just letting you know that Michaela Dino will be starting as a full-time officer on Monday, the first of July. Uh, secondly, um, our part arrived for our armored rescue vehicle yesterday. It was installed today and our gamble has paid off. So um, fully functioning with the exception of the air conditioning, which will get fixed.
Alright. Well, Chief, I, I did, uh, I know I brought up at, at our session about, um, motorizer, electric bikes, cruising on the trails. You can, uh, is there actually a speed limit on that, Chad, or not, not?
Well, I said, like in Minneapolis.
Oh.
You know, there's certain.
We do not have any posted speed limits on any of our trails.
Is, yeah. And obviously that would take council action to make that happen. So, um, if that's something that you guys are interested in do, doing, we can certainly look into it and.
Well, uh, with, uh, I've been having multiple complaints about the bikes zooming by people that are out walking and walking dogs, cause they, they're pretty quiet, I guess. And they come, they zip up on you pretty quick. So I mean, that's something we should look into.
Yeah, I think, you know, the difficult thing obviously is just the.
Enforcement of it. I understand that.
So, but we can easily pull some options from other communities, so.
Yep, we can certainly look at it if that's something that you want.
Alright, thank you, Chief. Anything else for Chief Gifferson?
Alright, thank you. Have a good night.
Mike, do you have anything for us?
Nothing, but I'd be happy to answer any questions about street projects if there are, but nothing.
Uh, how are the projects going with the rain? So, so good, so good, or?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're six weeks into and probably about two weeks behind where we'd want to be. Um, um, talking to Chad today, we're about a million dollars into a two point three million dollar season. So we're approaching a halfway point, um, with some drier weather this week, especially, boy, they're, they're really making up for some lost time. Um, doing a nice job. Oakland is, is coming together real nicely. I should see some paving, um, occurring soon. Franklin, they made some good, um, pro-um, progress on. Um, and again, most of our subgrade work now is done. Um, we've got a little bit left on Oakland, and then it's really all just surface, um, at that point. So, uh, that's a good place to be. And, um, we haven't used, um, you know, more than probably forty thousand in our contingency of a hundred thousand. And there's not much surprise when it's above surface. Subgrade, more issue potentially. Um, I do want to mention to, um, you know, flooding, uh, that was one of the questions, um, we'd had. And, and last week, we spent time administration, public safety, um, parks, um, public works, um, spent time looking at the flood response, especially with last week's forecast Thursday, Friday, Saturday of some big rains. Fortunately for us, we stayed on, on kind of the lighter side of those, those half-inch rains that others became one and three-inch rains each of those nights, um, really it kind of saved us. Um, we, we are doing well. Um, didn't have to close trails and things like that. So we'll continue to monitor, but we, again, as a community, are positioned really pretty well. There's doesn't seem to be any imminent threats or anything right now, barring again, you know, we still have some very wet conditions. A big rain could change that, but um, the forecast is looking good. Now, really through the fourth of July, um, cool temperatures and not a lot of precip.
So Robert's got his workhorse today.
And Robert's got his workhorse. Thanks, um, Jeff, for mentioning that. Um, Robert's is done. Um, this was last year's project, but we had the workhorse to do, and they're planning to stripe it tomorrow. So really, as of the end of the week, um, the end of the month, we'll be finished with that and really all of last year's project. So we're really in shape.
We also finally got a remarked crosswalk across the highway on Fifth Avenue.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, that was a, um, suggestion made months ago, but, uh, working with the D O T approval for, but yeah, that just recently got completed.
Anything else for Mike?
No, thank you for a response yesterday on the flood question.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Andy, you got anything else for us?
Nothing for business as usual in the cooling range hours.
Lynn, you have anything else for us? Alrighty. Uh, Mark?
Nothing tonight.
Alrighty, uh, Chad, let's start with you tonight.
I have not had any extra meetings since our last meeting, so I don't have anything extra yet.
Alrighty, Kim?
Well, with the rains, the library saw increases in their youth program, uh, of the number of kids coming in. They had the park, one at the park, and they had a hundred and fifty kids, the Dairy Princesses. They had like ninety-four people show up. Uh, so they've, they've had an increase, uh, especially with their kids programs. So uh, they have a whole list of things going on this summer and, and check it out. They've actually got some pretty cool things for kids going on and adults going on there. A lot of book clubs, a lot of great things happening there. So, uh, other, you know, I talked to Mike yesterday about the river and the flood. I had some questions about where we sat, especially after the whole Mankato thing. I got a couple of calls. And just, I, I think as a thing, I, we have a storm retention pond in our backyard. It's very high. Watch your kids around them, oh, in the river. And if there's barriers, don't cross them.
They're up for a reason, right?
Yes.
Alrighty. Anything else, Tim?
That's it. Thank you.
Alright, Dave, what do you got for us?
Well, we had our M M D C, uh, yearly meeting a couple of weeks ago, and that turned out well, uh, pacifying colors and, uh, whatever they call it, when they finalize everything for money and projects and that type of thing. They're doing well. Still concentrating on traffic, or not traffic, I'm sorry, mobility. And I wanted to bring it up at the meeting earlier when, uh, you know, M M D C is still working on mobility, no matter what it is, volunteer driving vehicles, uh, that type of thing. So there are avenues of, uh, uh, resources for mobility, uh, it's tough to cover everything, but, uh, they'll eventually get it to where we have. And thank God we have A C C, D A V, you know, and those type of people to help out with that. So here and, uh, but, uh, volunteer drivers are still the key thing to a lot of people. Neighbors are keys to helping other, their neighbors if they need, uh, get to someplace and that type of thing. So still working on that. It'll be a long haul.
Alrighty.
Hundred percent of the people mobile when they need to be and when they need to be home again, so.
Alright. Thanks, Dave. Pat?
Uh, Public Arts Council, our committee met last week and statutes are all out. I mean, the, uh, for everybody to see, there's pamphlets in there that shows the route and everything. It's kind of wet.
Alrighty. Matt?
Uh, just a couple reminders. First off, uh, city offices will be closed Thursday, July fourth for the Independence Day holiday. And then we do have an audit workshop prior to our next council meeting. That's at four thirty. So we'll obviously send a reminder. I'll, excuse me, but that will be before our next council meeting. So I'll be at their twenty-twenty-three audit report, so.
That it?
That's all I have.
Alrighty. Um, I don't know if the other, other council people have seen, uh, lady sent a little thing on, uh, about fireflies that, uh, there are a lot of, a lot of light pollution, she said, and evidently that kind of kind of bothers them when they're mating. So she just asked if could the residents of Hutchinson could turn off unused lights for the fireflies. So alrighty, um, I did have a H R A meeting. Um, we still have, uh, vacancies at, uh, Park Towers. So if you're looking for apartment, uh, uh, just call, uh, H R A and they can hook you up. Um, the other thing, uh, for housing in Hutchinson, uh, and on, uh, the month of May, they had, uh, twenty-five new listings, twelve houses. Um, they had twenty-four sales that closed. Uh, medium sale price, uh, was two seventy-five. Average sale price was two ninety-four, four oh seven. So, um, there are still houses moving. So that's about it. So, uh, we're gonna go into a closed session. Purpose of this closed session is to develop or consider and offer for the sale of real estate property at four forty-four Washington West in Hutchinson. I would now entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss a possible sale of real estate located at forty-four Washington West.
So. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to go into closed session to discuss the possible sale of real estate. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. City Council has convened.
I'll go off, right?
Yeah.